Good, Randy. Good evening, we'd like to call the Holbrook City Council meeting to order for November 12, 2025 at 6:00 PM. We'll call everybody's in attendance except for Councilman Black, who called in his absence. On staff, we've got Manager Sullivan, Administrative Director Misty Hatch, let's see if I remember everybody's title, Code Enforcement, our replied Chief Christensen, we've got Clerk Lisa Hunt, and we've got our clerk in training Jackie Dewey.
Dwight.
No, Dwyer, right. I didn't at least call you by the other name, right? All right, with that, we would like to start with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Vice Mayor Nielsen, followed by a dedication by Kip Myers.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our gracious Father God, what a joy it is for us to come before your presence tonight. Your word tells us that happier those people that truly trust in you. And Father, I am thankful that our city council is desirous of beginning by coming before you, even as our national oath is in God we trust. Father, we ask for your presence, your wisdom for these, our council members, and for our entire city. We give you praise and thanks in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you very much. All right, moving on to consent agenda, this is for the October 22nd, 2025 regular meeting minutes. Hopefully, everybody's had a chance to read through them. Does anybody have any questions, concerns, potential edits? Hearing none will open the floor for a motion.
I make motion to approve October 22nd, 2025 regular meeting minutes.
I'll second it.
We have a motion, a second, any last minute concerns? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item number five, call to the public for non-agenda items.
There is one item.
Thank you. All right, thank you very much. So we have one. Norma, we'd like to invite you to come to the podium, if you don't mind us speaking into that microphone. You'll just give us your name, and then you'll have three minutes to talk.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Norma Jacobs. I am a military wife, and I have come to say thank you to the city council for giving the pictures that are up on all of the light poles. These men and women have served and are serving in the military, both during wartime and peace. Think of all of the privileges Americans it has and is giving by living in America. We get so involved in our daily lives that we forget our freedoms, our privileges, that they are out there fighting for us. America is a special country. We can agree and disagree and still remain friends. There are countries that do not have this. Again, thank you for your energy, your time, in putting up the wonderful photographs of the veterans that gave their time and their energy to keep us free. Again, please continue this same opportunity for people that were unaware of this, and hopefully next year we can continue to have it. Thank you again.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it. All right, item number six, call to the public for agenda items.
There are items.
All right, moving on to our presentation. Tonight, we've got Vicki Solomon with us with the Nexus Coalition. She's going to give us an update on current drug trends and free services available at Nexus, in which you guys have a pamphlet here. Think she does have a presentation here?
You bet. Thank you very, very much, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, and leaders and members. I appreciate the opportunity of being here. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Vicki Solomon. I'm Executive Director for Nexus, and I am a lifetimeer in the White Mountains. I was born and raised in Overguard, Arizona, and lived there for 18 years. We didn't have a high school there, so I was bussed over to Snowflake for four years and graduated, yes. And right after that, I found Ronnie Solomon, who I married, and we've been in Taylor 37 years this month. I was able to raise four kiddos, and I've got five grand kiddos, and this prevention work is very dear to my heart. I've been in many different roles, and I've always served the community my entire working life, and I love it, and I think I found my dream job. So I'm just going to tell you a little bit about Nexus Coalition. I'd like to come and give updates on who we are and what we do, because we do serve your guys' community here in Holbrook. I've been able to expand services this direction, and we'll talk a little bit about in a minute. But the ultimate goal that we have is just two themes. One of them is we want to reduce substance use and increase resiliency and connection among the youth and their parents or the caregivers. That's our, that's one of our number-one goals. And the second one is we want to establish and strengthen connection and collaboration among community organizations. And so with that, how we do that is we actually, we partner with 12 different sectors in the community, and it's kind of funny when I think about this, because what we do, anybody that's breathing, we want to work with you, because there's this other category. If you don't fit into any of these other boxes, we have other, which is everybody else. And so we want to find those organizations that we are not working with and see if we can work with you. We run off of federal and state grants, so we work our tail ends off trying to get the money for our communities, so everything we do is free. And that's something that I don't think people realize is we don't charge for our services. Right now, there are six of us that are staffed. I have Cheyenne, she's a part-timer, and the rest of us are full-time. But we've got, we've got people working in the Pine Top Sholo Lakeside area, and then we've opened up Snowflake-Taylor, and we've expanded into Holbrook, and we've been servicing Holbrook for about two years now, and we're just trying to work our way through Navajo County so that we can provide those services that people are raising their hands and saying, hey, we want you, we need your help. And so some of the different things that we do is provide resiliency workshops. So whenever I first joined Nexus, gosh, it's been, it's been almost 10 years ago, but they were, we were focused on just youth only. And after about two or three years, I'm like, this, this isn't right. We've got adults that are attached to these youth that need to learn this as well, and we need to try to connect them together. And so we kind of shifted a little bit, and so we provide adult resiliency and youth resiliency. And so that, that's pretty cool. Over on this right-hand side, our grant year starts and ends in October, so we just finished last year's grants and the numbers, these are the most current numbers. And you guys, this is hot off the press, this is the first time being able to present, because these numbers are new. But we had about 9,600 youth that participated in the Nexus activities. We had about 3,700 adults, I'm sorry, 3,400 adults, and then we had about 661 activities that were provided. The naloxone or the Narcan distribution, there was 824, and with the distribution, we don't stand on street corners and hand it out, we provide education, make sure that they know how to use it, that they're comfortable, that it doesn't get dusty whenever they grab it. So that is, that's a really cool thing that we do. And then 42,000 educational materials that were distributed. So I gave you packets, and those are some of the information, just about this, this much. We have too much, I don't think I could fit it all in this room. And so if you see anything that you like that we can place in other different areas, please let us know. We have been known throughout the court system, all throughout Navajo County. We have a little section, and we have our pamphlets and brochures that are there that are super easy to read and user-friendly, and so please let us know if we can help with that. School services, we teach resiliency and prevention classes. We do have diversion classes for kiddos that might be in trouble. We also have, we teach some of the same curriculum in diversion for other classes that kids are struggling because they're getting straight A's, they're stressed out, they're too hard on themselves, they don't know that messing up is proof that you are trying, they don't remember that you are enough, or, you know, like right now, speaking in front of you, inhale and exhale, and then also talking a little kinder to yourself today, and then it's okay not to feel okay. And so we have stickers, we provide education, we provide those prevention services for not only kiddos that are in trouble, but kids that are doing good too, that still, that need that extra help. And so we do tabling events, we do have free naloxone and naloxone training. Tomorrow, I will be in Winslow, providing that for the Winslow High School, sorry, Winslow School District staff, and so that's always available and on the table if anybody would like that. So now, some local highlights, instead of words, I got photos for you guys, because I love photos, because when I look at a picture, I know what happened, and it's telling the story in my brain, so maybe you can remember some of these. We were over at Indian Wells not too long ago for Red Ribbon Week, the end of October, and all of last year, we went to Indian Wells over and over and over, and it is a wonderful school, and the kids are like sponges, and they just, they appreciate the information, and we were extremely welcomed in there. And so we're trying to continue those services that, that we provided over there. Stormy is amazing, she's been hired on just under six months, and she just took prevention education and ran with it, and she had an in with the jail here in Holbrook, and she's over here once a week, providing resiliency education for those that go through the jail. And for people that aren't super familiar with it, our jail system does not have people for 30 years in the jail. It's like seven to 10 days, they're in and they're out back in the streets. And so we want to provide that resiliency, the life skills, the education piece, that whenever they leave, maybe they, maybe they weren't taught or didn't have the opportunity to learn some of those life skill, resiliency things that it, that it takes. And then if they're parents, we know that kiddos, that's a whole nother layer that, that we have to learn on how to deal with kiddos as well. So that has been a blast and been very successful. The teen center, we are so excited for the groundbreaking and things that are happening there. I absolutely love that, so we try to support that as much as we can. And then we have an art contest that we do every year, it's up and running right now. It'll close in May, and this year, we're going to divide it up. We have so many amazing artists throughout all of Navajo County, K through 12. We divided it up into a couple of different sections so we can give out more prizes, but there's, there's money involved in these, but that's available, and we can send information on that as well. We also have been working with NCIS, which is phenomenal program. We were able to bring in Ryan, who's a fitness instructor, and he came, and it was the coolest thing ever to see them gruffy boys out there, and they love that fitness and education that they receive. We also found a little need, and that's something really cool about Nexus is if we see a need that's not being met, we're very flexible, that I try my very best to try to take care of that need. And the little gap that we found was that at one of the schools, there were some kiddos that didn't have children's and feminine products, and they talked about shaving cream and shampoo, and just kind of your basic stuff that, that as you spoke earlier, sometimes we take advantage and don't think about what we're thankful for, because we have it all the time, and, and we've seen that need, so we put together a little area, and we try to keep this stocked for those kiddos. And we have a little brown bag in there, and they just come and they take, there's no questions asked, they put it in their backpacks and they're out the door. So that has been a really cool project that we were able to fund as well. Lots of cool activities. We, we are so, we are so grateful to have the Junior Leadership Academy. We have ran JLA 18 years in Blue Ridge, 10 years in White River, and five years in Snowflake. And we would love to see if we can get Holbrook on board. And what it takes is, we look for two schoolteachers who are champions that would like to get paid for two weeks out of the summer to run a Junior Leadership Academy, and we go to the fire station, and we go to the court system, and we go to the senior centers that are, that are in the area, and we try to immerse the kiddos in their community so that they can see not only maybe job opportunities that might be available, but just knowing some of the resources and things that are available, because as a kid, sometimes your world is really small, and we want their, we want their world to be a little bit bigger. And so it's just a really fun activity that we have for two weeks. We work very tightly with the National Guard, and they love coming here and educating the kiddos, and they actually stay for the one day that they come. They only come and educate for like an hour, but they want to stay the entire day with the kids. And so the kids get to hang out with National Guard, and they have a blast. Some of the things we do is running the mile, fire station tour, we have a mama bear, baby bear book that's, it's talking, it's, it's these bears that are talking about drugs and alcohol in their, in their home, but it's, it's very easy reading and easy understanding, and it's not directed at drugs and alcohol, they just talk about addiction. We have guest speakers, we have kind, the kind teachers, which in, in the classroom every single day, there's like a character trait that they work on, different things, watercolor painting, and then just a plethora. What they do in two weeks, it just blows me away, it seems like we had it for like eight months, but it's two weeks that they cram all of this fun stuff for the kids. And again, it's about a $400 or $450 per kid value, and we do it for free. And then the two schoolteachers, they get, they get paid a decent amount to run that for us. We have everything for them, and we are the sidekicks that help them, but they are the ones running it, because they're the schoolteachers, and they are more familiar with the kids, and so it works better whenever they're running it. Here's just some comments that we get from parents and caregivers. Amazing program, kids need life skills, great job. I love how my daughter made a few friends and enjoyed everything that was done. I really appreciate the program, amazing program for youth, I wish all youth could and would attend. So we do surveys for the youth and also for the parents, so we can get input from them, so we can make modifications when needed, but we've got a lot of wonderful feedback. My youth struggles with self-esteem, this program was very positive for her. We have a lot of that that comes through. And then in closing, we are very honored to be part of the Giving Machine this year. So there's going to be two weeks in Sholo that we're not part of that one, but then whenever it moves to Snowflake, our nonprofit Friends of Navajo County Anti-Drug Coalition Inc., that's a, I didn't make that up, somebody else did, but it's its own entity, and we were chosen to be part of that. And here's some of the items that are in that Giving Machine. The Giving Machine will be in Snowflake from November, I'm sorry, December 18th until January 2nd, and so that's going to be really cool, and like I said, it's been an honor to be chosen to be part of the Giving Machine this year. And then wrapping it up, we provide lots of really super cool free themes. I've got Destiny Hall, who is a whiz, and she makes all of our PowerPoints beautiful and all of our curriculum, everything is just really super professional and neat and tidy, and I love it. So we just wanted to share this, these little stickers, we, we've had these for about eight months now, and we have thousands and thousands of them, and I tested it, I stuck it on my mug, I put two of them on my mug, and I rounded through the dishwasher three different times, didn't even touch it, it was awesome. The only thing that happened is I dropped my mug somewhere along the highway, and someone found it and knew that it was mine, isn't that weird? And three miles down the road, they call and said, I think this mug might be yours, and it did ruin it after it tore it up, so I had to tear it off and then put another one on. But these are free, if you need any, anywhere, let me know. Like I said, we literally have a telephone, it has a QR code that leads to local services, and then also it has a 24-hour crisis line that we try to promote and make sure everybody's aware of. And then that, is there any questions on Nexus Coalition?
Well, we appreciate the great presentation and all the good things you're doing, and we appreciate you being in Holbrook as well, and we know we're going to be working with you a lot more, because that teen center's open, which is coming soon. I know we could have a ton of questions, but we'll fill just a few, just to keep time sake, does any, but you did give us your contact information, which we appreciate too, but maintain, does somebody have any pressing questions?
No questions, just a comment about the importance of prevention work, which is, cannot be, it's, it cannot be magnified any more than the work that you guys do. Nexus is a great organization, we partner a lot with them on different types of community and awareness events, and they also have Narcan, you can reach out to them and get free Narcan, you might be able to save somebody's life, but I just really appreciate all of the work that you guys do, prevention and substance abuse, the intersection between substance abuse and the criminal justice system, other types of crime, especially at the youth level. When children are in a position where their whole world is surrounded, they have drug-addicted parents or substance abuse-addicted families, and that's the only world that they know, and then we're shocked, right, when they're 18, 19, and they're following in that, in those people's footsteps. It really takes a village to bring a child through a situation like that, so I just really appreciate all the work that Nexus does.
Thank you, appreciate that, we appreciate the comment. Thank you for that. All right, thank you so much for being here, we do appreciate it. All right, eight old business, there is none. So number nine, new business, I shouldn't grab the glasses. So this is ordinance 25-06, so this is a first reading. Again, just as a reminder, as a first reading, we discuss it, and we will not vote on it until the next meeting, which won't be until December, but let me give you a little background on this. All right, so it says, "The city of Holbrook currently lacks a standardized process for licensing businesses operating within city limits. Establishing a business license requirement will help the city track active businesses, improve communications, support economic development efforts, and ensure compliance with zoning and safety regulations." This ordinance proposes the addition of Article 2-5 Business License Required Application Fees to Chapter 2 of the Holbrook City Code. The new article outlines the requirement for businesses to obtain a license prior to operating in Holbrook, provides application procedures, and establishes applicable fees. The proposed ordinance aims to promote public health and safety by ensuring businesses operate in compliance with local regulations. It also provides the city with valuable data to better support local economic development and enforce city codes. The ordinance also includes provisions for penalties, severability, and an effective date. So as a reminder, I know you guys are like, wait, we've talked about this a few times, which we have, so administration's gone back with a lot of our concerns, so I want to go over just a few highlights, hopefully you guys will go over a few. So the ordinance, I won't go through there, but if you turn a few pages over to the actual code, and I just want to go over a couple of the additions and maybe subtractions that were added to this particular license. If you look on page five, it says license required, for 2-5-2. Every person engaging in a business within the city shall apply for a business license to the city building department, and shall pay an annual license fee as established by the city council. As a reminder, when we were doing our fees, we decided not to put a fee on this, so at this point, there is no fee attached to it, it would still be a requirement, no fee. Business license required unless the activity is exempt under the applicable provisions of the city code. So going on, if you turn the page to page six, number two, I'm just going to go quickly. No license shall be issued involving septic tank, food and beverages, hotels, motels, RV parks, animals, and childcare. So the Navajo County Health Department has certified the applicant's place of business meets all health department requirements. Applicants must submit a copy of this certification to the building department prior to the license issuance. And this is going to be a big deal moving forward, it's like, before we even pass it, from our administrative standpoint, they've got to do their due diligence and have the county sign up on that. The issuance, basically, they have 10 days to submit an application, the applicant will be notified if additional information is required. If the application is denied, the building department shall provide the applicant with a written statement of the reasons for the denial, and shall require that any deficiencies be corrected within 30 days of the denial notice. So then it goes through that process. If you skip over to D though, on page seven, for the term, says, "Business licenses shall be effective and valid for one year or any portion of a year from the date of the application approval. License shall renew each year thereafter." Sorry. Violations on the last, second last page, nine, violation penalty, this is one that I had concerns of, because there was a range of violation fees. So if you look at first violation, it says a civil penalty of not less than $150. So administration went, and they just did it that way, it's not subjective to like 150 up to, I don't remember what even what it was, 1,500, something like that. And it was subjective to, you know, administration, which I felt like there's, we don't want to be subjective when it comes to fees. The second violation, 250, and the third is $500. Again, on last page, talks about fees, says, "Business license fee shall be established by resolution and set forth in the city council's fee schedule." This time, there's not one, but it is in the ordinance, in case we ever decide if we're going to work fees again, we decide we want to tack on a 15, $25, $30 fee, we can. The other thing that we talked about was the home occupation, that was a big issue before. Councilwoman Pacheco and myself, oh, it's been what, two months now, had a chance to go down to Globe and talk with their assistant city manager and their mayor and their Economic Development Director, and we talked about their business license too, and they said how much it really helped. We asked them about their home-based businesses, home occupation businesses, and they said everybody's required to. And the reason why we do that is to keep it fair, because we know there's going to be, well, for that, I'm going to read a statement, sometimes it's just easier for me to write it down, so I wrote down a few words of why I'm in support of this. Adopting a citywide business license is one of the most important steps we can take to protect Holbrook's growth, safety, and long-term revitalization. This is not about creating a necessary bureaucracy, it's about building a foundation of accountability, accurate data, and responsible community stewardship. Currently, we've talked about before our zonings, they said on Hopi Drive, about 75% of our businesses there are zoned incorrectly. So thus, in the next month or so, we're going to be dealing with those issues too. But a business license system will provide the structure needed to verify compliance within zoning code and the health standards while ensuring fairness and accountability among all businesses operating within our city. So we keep saying downtown revitalization was our key strategies, and to be able to do that, we've got to have a system in place that allows us to see who's coming in and have that contact information. Barbara's job would be a lot easier if we can find out who's in charge there, have an email and a phone number forum to do it. So having this business license will protect our code enforcement processes, ensuring that, because safety, I mean, we could have anybody coming in and just fixing up their building, but we don't know if it's safe or not. It's like, did you have a licensed contractor? There's a lot of lost revenue too, since we've had code enforcement coming in, I don't remember what the revenue was, I remember asking a few months back, but it was substantial as far as even just permitting fees like that, since people are finally coming. No, I'm not putting you on the spot, Barbara. No, so, sorry. But it'll help us provide that accurate data, it'll support our revitalization efforts, and then it'll create fairness and transparency with the, in regards to home occupation businesses. Many of these operate quietly but may create traffic, parking, or safety issues if not properly identified and regulated. Licensing allows us to work with these entrepreneurs proactively, supporting their success while maintaining the safety and character of residential areas. For the most part, most people are going to be fine on their home-based businesses, but we've got to be careful with those that are operating in a mechanic shop maybe outside of their home, and it is impacting the neighborhoods and the parking and things like that. But Mr. Sullivan, do you want to add anything to this, and then I'm going to turn just a few minutes over to Ms. White?
No, I, I think that the whole reason why we're presenting this back to you guys as a first read was when we got to the second read the last time, there were so many questions and unanswered visuals out there or whatever. So I, we tried to take this back and tried to address all the concerns council had, met with the attorneys, rewrote those sections with the concerns, so we, I hope this looks better for what you guys like.
And Barbara, do you want to add anything to that? I, I referenced code enforcement, so.
Yeah, other than, you know, it's situations we have been running into where businesses have come in, of course unbeknownst to us, already operating, do not have certificates of operation, have never had inspections, we've been finding electrical issues and other safety issues, and so it's kind of like a ladder, they get their business license, we inspect it, we give them the okay to go ahead and, and start operating, you know, it is a health and safety factor if a building catches on fire, you know, while somebody, you know, while customers are in there. So we're looking at trying to bring out health and safety codes, you know, within the city as we're going to grow, we need to have some standards that we need to set, and so this is, you know, the way to start. We've already been going out, you know, and we have new businesses that are going to be coming in, and so we also want to appear professional too, you know, and say, okay, this is our process, so, you know, it's been working well, and I, and I think this- you know, it's been working well and I, and I think this will really help it. It's like the first rung in the ladder.
I think it'll help us not to be taken advantage of as some businesses have. So with that, I'll open, oh, does my outside comment? I'll open the floor for any discussion.
What about businesses that are already currently, they're not new businesses, are you gonna go to them and, and talk to them about this business?
Right.
So will you mail something out or?
Well, I was thinking we'd be doing a public, you know, we haven't gotten to that point yet until we're close to that everyone agrees to it. But either have like a public meeting, a town meeting, and people can come and we can do a Q and A and introduce ourselves and kind of talk about what, you know, the city of Holbrook looks like for the future and what we're planning to do, what we're trying to help, you know, bring up the businesses. And, you know, we have to go door to door too. We haven't had any problems with it so far. We've been going to some businesses, sending them letters, finding out, hey, you came into town, you know, we'd like to meet with you and inspect the building and you need to have a C of O. And they've been fine. Nobody said, oh, don't, you know, you can't come in my building or I'm not doing that. So.
And so new businesses, if you see one, then you would go in there.
Right now, yes. Right now, we're trying to attack new businesses that have come in. You know, like within the last six months that we didn't know about, that are operating. Um, and then, you know, as we go on, um, then we'll start hitting the regular businesses.
And how will you do the home-based businesses?
Same way. Um, I mean, I, I know there's a list of like Bed and Breakfast. We need to check those for health and safety in the house. Egress, that's important. Someone goes there, there's a fire, they can't get out. You know, so, you know, probably we, I made up a list of every, all the businesses I know of. We have a list of Bed and Breakfast. So, you know, we'll be sending out a letter to everybody, letting them know this is what we're planning to do. Um, and we'll be in touch with them. And it'll take time, but if we get it going and get everybody there, then after that, it's just, you know, gonna be every year follow-up.
We will have that leeway that first year. I think we've kind of talked about, given a six months, I believe, was one of the.
What guarantee would there be that the fees wouldn't go up?
There's no guarantee. It depends on council's.
Can you understand if I own a business, how distasteful this is for me? I'm gonna pay you so you can inspect me and then fine me up to five hundred dollars.
Well, if you look at that five hundred, I think that's kind of like the way code enforcement is. If after twenty-four months, if you've done this twice in a row, within twenty-four months, then you get fined.
I'm still, this has a really bad taste in my mouth.
I mean, if you're doing the right thing, then you don't have to have to worry about it.
I, I have a quick question. So will you inspect every business in Holbrook in order to get the business license? You guys will go in and inspect for everything. You'll go through everything to make electrical. Um, my concern is how old this town is and how many older buildings there are. Everybody's going to be fined. And then the second thing that I wanted to ask.
It has nothing to do about finding.
But the second thing I want to ask.
Then why did you put it in the?
It has to do with business licenses.
Yeah, that's if they don't get the business license.
If they don't get their license.
Yeah, but how can they get their license if they fail your inspection is what I'm saying.
Right.
And so, and so you want me to support this? I have a business. And then you want to charge me thirty-five dollars this year, a hundred and thirty-five next year? No, we're not charging.
I, I have another question. Do you inspect every year?
We don't.
Is it gonna be an inspection every year or just a renewal? Or I think it's just a renewal.
It's just gonna be a.
I believe it's just a renewal as long as they're not doing. Okay, so look at it this way, like, for example, with the fees, we went into a business that came into town. No certificate of occupancy, no permits. They did remodeling in the building. We knew nothing. Okay? We went out there. I sent them a letter telling them, you know, we were reviewing our businesses and find that we don't have anything on you. We don't even know anything about you, you know? Basically, we'd like to come and do an inspection. You need to have a certificate of occupancy. So we go out there and they do have a health certification, because that's the first thing, if it's a food business. Okay, we found issues in there. No GFIs, electrical things, um, some code issues with gas and things like that. We're not fining them. Gave them thirty days. And thirty, you know, you have thirty days to get these taken care of. These are actual health and safety issues that affect the public that uses these establishments. Fine, no problem. We'll do it. We'll come back in thirty days. You know, we are not out there to just get somebody. We're out there to help everybody, but, you know, we have to have a standard. And we need to bring people up to that standard in order to keep the city safe and the community safe. So we're not out to find anybody. You know, now if they refuse to do something and it's a health and safety, like you take the Sahara Hotel where we went and shut them down. You know, and everyone had to leave. Yeah, in that case, you know, we would do that. But this is just strictly come in, tell us who you are, you know, do you have a license to operate? You have a detox center coming in. Is it just gonna be Joe Blow off the street? Is it gonna be somebody who's certified? You know, they need to have, if, if, you know, depending on the business, they need to be experienced in that and have the certifications they need to operate. Otherwise, you're putting the community at risk.
And it is a cost of doing business. I own a couple of different businesses in town and I'm okay with it and I get it. Like, we're the one remodeling something because we know that safety is important to those clients that are gonna be coming to my property. And it's a liability after that. And I, I get the concern because we've got quite a few business owners here, which I appreciate their feedback. And we do need your feedback, and this is why we have this first reading, which is great. But at the same time, why are we in the situation we are is because Holbrook has not had a standard. And so every, we've got all these scrupulous people that'll come in and like, I can do whatever I want in this building because nobody's chucking. And so one of these days, we gotta say, yeah, it's gonna hurt a little bit to start it, and we're gonna go through some growing pains. But I think this is the right administration and council to say, okay, we can work through these growing pains because we may be reasonable. We may have to adapt a few things. But eventually, we have got to expect a certain quality and standard in Holbrook for our businesses.
Well, I'm not against doing a business license and we're not gonna be charging for that. My thing is on these penalties, are you gonna be able to enforce those over the years' time? I mean, you can't say this is gonna happen and you do it with one business a couple of years down the road. And then the next business doesn't do it, and then that one falls behind. It doesn't. If you're gonna put something in place, it's gotta be consistent, no matter what business it is. And who?
I assure you of consistency. Um, you know, it's kind of like what I do with code enforcement now. It's the same type of thing. You know, we will go in, we will help you. You know, we will do everything we can, and it goes on for six months until you get to the point where, look, if you're not going to do anything on your end, then we fine you. But, you know, what we started doing was, I'll tell you what, we take that fine and we use it to pay the people to clean up your property. So we're trying to work with people as well. The only time people get fined is if they just refuse to do anything. But still, they go through a hearing where the hearing officer and the hearing officer will determine.
I have a question.
Yes, go, go ahead, person, then.
Go ahead. Okay, so these, these penalties that are listed, this is, this would be for failing to apply for the license.
Right.
That's it.
Right.
And there's no financial implication for somebody to apply for that business license. Other than you could deem that their property isn't up to code and they can't operate until that's done. And then that could impact their ability to operate. My, I, because I don't own a business. I'm just wanna make sure that I'm. So my, my big thing is, and I'm actually kind of, so when we're talking about planning and zoning issues, right? This has been my confusion a little bit is why, what are we saying? We're saying, okay, we're zoning this C two or whatever we're gonna decide those codes are. That is dictated by, I guess, policy, right? Like, you have to, this is a zone. They register for the license as their business operating within the functions of code for that zone, right? So without precedence, we can't even begin to do anything. Like, we, it ties the city's hands to enforce anything. I, I, I'm kind of shocked that we don't have something like this already, um, in place. Because what then happens is then we have businesses operating outside of compliance. And then the city and the council has no authority to hold them accountable in any way. So we have to start somewhere, which is, um, and I agree, there needs to be leniency. We need to work with these businesses that have been established for so long. We're not, and I, I, for years, I mean, my uncle Mike was the code enforcer, Mike Odell, for a lot of years. And I just talked to Ralph Hatch about, uh, code enforcement the other day when he was the Justice of the Peace. And he said, the whole goal even back then was to work with people to get, even if it's, it, there's long extensions. They don't have the money and they need a year or two.
And we offer to go in and bring people in to help them. And we've been doing that. You know, we spent a lot of time going through the.
Barbara talked about the last meeting that hopefully it might even be a grant to help some of these businesses.
Exactly. Yeah, if we could bring in some financial, um, remedies for businesses to apply directly to the city to help kind of bring some of these buildings up to par. Those are things that we can research.
But what it does too is before a business even comes in, which is because we're in the situation we are with trying to rezone everything, is you need to know, are you even zoned in the right area to open up that business? And that's what we're dealing with, with this whole rezoning issue, because you have every kind of business in all the zones mixed together. So there's no consistency anywhere. So by doing that, the first thing is, I want a business license. This is what I want to open. This is where. Then we sit down and go, okay, well, let's see, are you in the correct zone? You know, if not, then maybe we give them ideas for other things or maybe help them to look somewhere else. So it's a pattern that has to start somewhere. You know, right now, we don't know anything till after the fact.
And we're working on planning and zoning and what that would look like for these areas, which we can also take into account existing, existing businesses input to make sure we're not ostracizing a business.
Right.
When we're deciding what zones and codes will be enforced in those areas.
Alright, who is next?
So, to me, it's, it seems like it would make more sense if we had our zoning figured out before doing the business permitting. I mean, if we have a zone, the zoning established, then we know where the businesses are. Then they'll know where they're allowed to be.
But right now, you can't tell anybody anything because.
So we're just gonna.
They just do it. Well, then it's just gonna keep going on and on and on. And businesses are gonna come in and we don't know they're coming in. And we don't know where they're going. And until we hear something from somebody, either a complaint.
And I agree. I think that we should have it to, for data and we know who's coming in and who's leaving.
It'd be great to have a directory for the city, you know, of businesses.
Well, we do have a planning and zoning plan, which is really outdated. But I mean, that's how you guys, we, that's what you would have to operate under.
And Barbara's proven that, I mean, she works with the public. I mean, she's worked well with people getting.
And I think the idea to, we'll admit we don't have all the answers, but we gotta start somewhere. And we gotta start working all the kinks out. And, um, this kind of gets us in a place where we could at least start.
Well, and all kind of is a pattern, you know? You get a business license, then you have to apply for building permits, sign per. See, if we don't know what businesses are coming in, I've seen signs all over town. They, they put up signs. There's no permits, not much money we're losing in fees because we're, we don't know what's coming in and what people are doing. This way, we get to meet with them, get to tell them, okay, this is what you need to do, you know? Apply for a business permit, apply for a signed permit. We come out and inspect. You know, their permits are good for six months and then they're self-renewable for another six months. So it's not like they have to pay after it expires to take care of what they need to. So it, it's just, you know, how it's gonna work. It's going up the ladder. That's the chain. But we don't know anything if we don't know what's coming in. You know, what happens if a business comes in and it catches on fire or something happens in the community? You know, it's gonna come back to the city. Well, you let them come in. They didn't need a license. They didn't get inspected. You know, that's what we're trying to, you know, to thwart off is to keep the, you know, the public safe.
Thank you. If you had anywhere, come, go ahead.
So you need a permit. So you're gonna go in and inspect this business in order to get a permit to start construction or start whatever that they're trying to do. And then the same people are gonna come back in and inspect on the business license portion of it?
No, so what happens is they'll come in and they'll get a business license.
Well, say I don't have a business license yet, but I have a building and I want to, and I already started working on it. And I have to get permits from the county or the city.
From the city, right?
Okay.
And then we come and inspect it.
You could do it concurrently. You could get the business license at the same time as the.
Right. They can do everything at the same time, or they can do it in steps, you know, however.
Depending on the stage their business probably is in.
So what portion of it is gonna tell me that if I am not in compliance for this, and my, and you say you get violations if you don't have it? What portion is, what entity is gonna be violating me? Is it gonna be code enforcement or is it gonna be not?
It's gonna be the building department. We're the building department, which runs code enforcement permits and.
And if I have a, if I'm running a business out of my house, what's gonna differentiate that from a building itself?
What is what? I'm sorry.
If I have a home-run business, what are you gonna come in and inspect for that?
Well, it depends what it is. If it's a B and B, you need to inspect it. You need to make sure there's egress. There's fire egress for people to get out, that it's ADA accessible, you know? You go into a business, there's no ADA accessible bathroom. How are people gonna use the restroom, you know, if they're handicapped and wheelchair? So, you know, those are all things we want to look at, you know?
But say like I have general contracting going on. I don't have clients coming to my home, things like that. It's all paperwork. You don't need to come inspect my home for that.
Oh, sure they do. Absolutely they do. How do you know she doesn't have her oily rags next to her solvus? Seriously?
No, because they're not running it out of their home. That's.
We're not doing business out of it.
Right. You know?
But it's a business license. I mean, if I have a business that runs differently than a general contracting business, why do I have to pay for a business license if I'm just someone?
Because you're having people come to your house and you're operating and selling out of your house, whereas.
But isn't that the whole point of having a business license is to have a list of all the businesses in town?
I'm sorry?
Isn't that the reason why we want a business license? So we have a directory of the businesses that are in town?
Why, yes.
So how do I get to know if they're the general contracting business if there's no information on it because they didn't have to get a business license?
We will have to get a business license, just like Globe told us.
Yes, but not for, not for their house.
But they don't have to get inspected though.
Right, not in their home.
It depends on what we're actually doing.
My mom ran her salon from our home. And we had to apply for a business license. I still remember the tedious process. Or we had to do something from the city. I was a teenager when that happened, but we had to make sure we weren't bothering our neighbors. She had to go around to every single neighbor and do, and sign off and get like approval and give it over to the city. So you can operate a business from your home. It just will have certain standards or requirements because you're gonna be in a residential area that you would have to comply with.
And it depends on the type of business.
Right, yeah. Like hers was a salon. That's an example.
If you remember a couple of years back, there was one of the older churches that somebody wanted to buy it and turn it into a thrift store. And they notified the neighbors and like, there's not enough parking for it. And so they didn't end up buying it. But that's the thing you have to look out for. It's like, what if they didn't have to come into a business license? They would be doing a thrift store right in front of this church. And churches can be in residential areas per zone. And they could have traffic all the time, just blocking people's driveways and affecting. And so that's why we need to know what's going on. So who's coming in? Well, I didn't reach back out to Globe. Unfortunately, they started having their flooding, things like that. But I'll reach back out to connections there. They said they were happy to share their, um, business license, but.
You mentioned a bed and breakfast. What is the difference between that and Airbnb? Isn't that considered a business as well?
There is a difference. There is a difference. A bed and breakfast.
As far as licensing, no.
Not, not for licensing, no. But bed and breakfast, they have to be approved by the health department. Because if you're offering any kind of food, you are Airbnb's. They've, there's a lot more leeway for Airbnb's if you look at.
So is Airbnb considered a business as well?
Yes.
And they would have to get a business license also and be inspected?
Yes, to make sure it's ADA accessible and fire and safety. Yes, to make sure it's ADA accessible, I mean, fire and safety, do they have the number of fire extinguishers, or, um, you know, smoke alarms that need to be in there, I mean, you know, all these things we're looking at are safety, safety issues, you know, and health issues.
So, only some businesses have to be inspected, but not all businesses?
Right, it's gonna depend what it is. I mean, if you run a daycare, yeah, I mean, they have to be certified, we need to make sure that they have the health department certification, or the Arizona Department of Secu- you know, economic security, if they're funded through them. You know, but we wanna make sure people are safe, that if you're bringing your children somewhere, it's safe, if you're going somewhere, that it's safe for you.
So, how is code enforcement gonna know that I have a business out of my house?
I couldn't hear you.
How is code enforcement going to know?
I have to wait till Andy stops calling.
Sorry.
So, if I wanna have a bit, so if I run a business out of my house, and it's nothing well-known, nobody really knows, except the people come and go, whatever, how is code enforcement going to prove that I have that? How are they going to enforce me?
Same way we Same way now.
But how, like, you're gonna come knock on my door and say, I hear you have business going on?
No, I'd send you a letter first.
But don't you have to prove that I have a business?
She may just inquire, say, hey, just to draw attention.
I would just inquire, say, I've heard this, you know, I'd appreciate if you give me a call and find out.
But how are you gonna violate?
I'm not gonna accuse you.
But how can you be in violation if you didn't apply for one in the first place?
Yeah, the, in those situations, we're not gonna always know.
The situation, we can't set policy based on all those unknowns.
But that business is gonna be non-compliant.
Why doesn't Phoenix require business licenses?
I'm sorry?
Why doesn't the city of Phoenix require business licenses?
I don't know what the city of Phoenix does.
Yeah, they, they have.
It says the city of Phoenix does not have or issued business licenses.
I, I don't know that for sure.
But if you look at all the different, City of Glendale, City of Maricopa, could, because they're all different, I don't know what
There's different things in play, you know. Winslow does, Glove does, that's the thing. So, that's the thing, we're always gonna find examples of, don't, some people have property taxes, some people do, right, so it depends, and things like that, but, um, so, there's gonna be still some more potential questions, please go talk to administration, or talk to Mr. Sullivan.
If there's, if there's any verbiage that, that you guys really felt that need to be changed, if it's not substantial, I don't see why we still cannot present this as a second reading.
If it's substantial, we'll go back to the first reading.
If it's substantial, we'll start all over again and try to come up with, with some recommendations. I do know this is a hot topic, it's been a hot topic for years. Um, I haven't always been, um, for it as well, but times are changing, and we, we got some, we got a lot of businesses coming in now that we haven't in the past, and, and we gotta get a, we gotta get control of this, or it's gonna, it's gonna get bad.
Otherwise, there's just a free-for-all, you know?
And we've been dealing with the free-for-all for a while. So, let me go ahead and read this by heading only, unless somebody wants me to read the whole thing. Okay, Robert's here to cut there, nope. All right, ordinance number twenty-five dash zero six, in ordinance of the Council of the City of Holbrook, Arizona, amending the Code of Holbrook, Arizona, Chapter Two, Business and Tax Regulations, by adding a new article two dash five, business license required, application fees, declaring the City of Holbrook City Code amendments to Chapter Two, Business and Tax Regulations, Article Two dash five, business license required, application fees. December tenth, twenty twenty-five, a public record, adopting the City of Holbrook City Code amendments to the Chapter Two, Business and Tax Regulations, Article Two dash five, business licenses required, application fees. December tenth, twenty twenty-five, by reference, providing for severability, providing for penalties, and establishing an effective date. So, if I just encourage everybody to come talk to Mr. Sullivan, let's do some research, let's find out why Phoenix doesn't, why some do, um, why some cities do, and how it's benefited them, maybe some of the pitfalls they've found. We'll go from there. Does anybody wanna add to anything before we move on? Okay, thank you. All right, item number B, ordinance twenty-five dash zero nine, RRC one, this is a first reading as well, let me give you a little background on this one. The Planning and Zoning Commission is actively working to modernize zoning codes and land used to better serve our communities. This proposed ordinance introduces important updates to Chapter Six dash one dash sixteen, the RRC dash one Railroad District Commercial Zone. These changes are designed to unlock new opportunities for growth, attract investment, and foster vibrant activity within the railroad district, creating a stronger, more dynamic future for our town. Um, just to clarify, a couple of weeks ago, we did talk about, we had the update about all the different issues and the C one and the C two changes there for Hoppy Drive, this is not that. And I, we should've had the big map, so maybe the next time, if we can get a map here, that would be great. Um, so basically, this is the railroad district, this is basically Bucket of Blood Street to, what's the back road there? Erin, what's the back road? Your street?
It, it would be Tovar, El, and Alborado.
So, it's basically that, just that neighborhood right there by the recycling center, so this is the only area that we're talking about. Um, so if you, I'll read by ordinance, the heading in a minute here, so. Thank you, Erin, for being here, so, um.
Some council members, pardon me, this is the area that's in discussion, it's the RRC one, and it's, um, the area across the railroad tracks, but before the river, it's a very small
Did the brown section there?
This brown section is on the
Thank you, we'll pass it down for a second, if you guys pass it on, then when you're done, if we bring it back to Holbrook here. So, just to highlight some of this, if you go, I'm not gonna read the ordinance yet, but if you flip it over a couple of pages into the actual code, you'll see what they're talking about here. So, at this point, if it's underlined, that means, uh, they cross it out, they're crossing out the old verbiage and adding the new. So, like, in, um, right there in the middle of A, it says, RRC, new reproductions and facsimiles, similes, utilizing architectural styles reminiscent of the Old West. This will also apply to new structures, residential dwellings are permitted to be erected or altered in accordance with a subsection along all roads within the district, except for Bucket of Blood Street and Central Avenue. Bucket of Blood Street and Central Avenue are to include ground floor commercial spaces with residential hous- housing, office or creative working spaces on the upper floors, or behind the primary commercial structure. So, if you look on the permitted principal uses, um, it used to be no permitted principal uses there, you'd have to do a conditional use on everything. They're saying, hey, if you have one of these items, you're automatically good in this zone, so they're saying, art galleries, antique stores, apparel and clothing, bakery, barber shops, bicycle rentals, book, newspapers, clubs, floor shops, government uses, health clubs, ice cream parlor, jewelry or gift shop, office and professional space, restaurant or cafe, resale and retail sa- sales. So, they're saying now that's automatically permitted, so if you wanna go open up a business right there on Bucket of Blood Street, on that side of town, on the west side, those are permitted. Uh, the conditional use permits, um, they've taken out a lot of those, made those permitted principal uses, and if you go down to the six below. So, in other words, conditional use, if you wanna open up a low-impact medical outpatient, multifamily housing, hotel motel, churches, home occupation, and light industrial, means you have to go through the planning and zoning process to get a conditional use permit. So, that means you just have to go make sure you, um, are qualified, or with any of the requirements that there are. So, again, tonight, this will be a first reading when we get there, so hopefully you had a chance to read through it, like you said, if it's underlying, that means it's new verbiage, crossing out the old.
So, is the transfer station in that?
As a government use?
So, so, um, we've been working out, the Planning and Zoning Commission has been working on this, uh, area as a pet project for, uh, well over a year. Uh, we had a consultant come in, Joe Jarvis, um, and we picked this project to work on first, because it was low-impact, it's a very depressed area in the city, and we wanted to revitalize it. Uh, we had a meeting in, um, September of twenty-four, where we invited all the property owners in, um, and got their feedback, and we examined the businesses and that were in operation in that small neighborhood, very much the way we're going to, uh, review the area of C one, uh, which was a topic of earlier discussion this evening. And the object in the city's desire is to bring the businesses that are operating into compliance, the transfer station and the, um, the new, uh, carbon utility, um, business that's operating. Uh, there were no provisions for them to be operating in the first place, um, and that's why we sought the need to rewrite the archaic, um, zoning for that area, which is what our intent is to do with the downtown area, because we want to know what businesses are operating, bring them into compliance, and make sure that they're zoned correctly. And so, the transfer station would be authorized under a conditional use, which, um,
Light industrial?
Light industrial, which would allow for the transfer station and the carbon utility, as well as an antique store, and the A E, the A E business, and the free-to-way business, and some of these other businesses for all to come into compliance.
Sorry, I'm trying to get my phone off.
So, 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 pri- prior, prior to this reading tonight, um, there were, there were, there were no uses, there were no permitted uses in this area, it's a very small footprint in the city, it's very unique, it's, it's the Holbrook's original town site, um, before any of the additions, so it is the very earliest, uh, part of Holbrook. It's where the oldest buildings are, and because of the intense restrictions that were put on this neighborhood, it has, it has fallen decay after they built the new bridge, which was in the nineteen eighties. And so, that was, that was the reason for rewriting this, uh, document, and now we've, we've decided to start working on, um, the downtown area to bring those businesses as well in compliance, as well as the businesses that are uh, operating, you know, currently, so it's just, it's just coming to turn, coming to, coming to modern times.
So, I mean, are, your, your vision is to have, uh, floor shop, bike shop, bakery, delicatessen, art gallery, and you're okay with the transfer station being next to that?
So, so, it's, it's not, it's not our vision. Um, StanTech, uh, StanTech did a area-wide plan, and both the RRC one and the C one, and some of C two in the downtown area, were focalized on this study, and they spent a lot of money and time, and the Planning and Zoning Commission had reviewed their recommendations, and we've adopted the things that would fit the city's need from our perspective. And it's a panel of, uh, members, you know, that give, give input, and we've, we've met with Randy several times, and Barbara, and Kathleen, and, and we just collaborated, and we came up with the best thing we can. Uh, of course, our consultant, Joe Jarvis, uh, gave us a lot of, uh, um, a lot of direction on that, and then, of course, it has to go to legal and, uh, be rewritten and all that, so it's, it's a very, very lengthy process.
So, many of you guys already received the community-wide plan, I don't think you've received it yet, we'll get you a copy of it, and so
A W P?
Uh, the area-wide plan.
Yeah, it, it's, it's a fantastic document, and, uh
But to answer, uh, Vice Mayor Nelson's question too, is that your vision? We know it'd be great to just do the ideal, but again, just like, as we talked about earlier, we're not kicking any business out, any existing businesses, things like that, so this brings in the conditions there, ideally. Who knows down the, the road, if we ever wanna be able to, is, is the transfer station, it used to be somewhere else at one time? You know, it is, it is mobile, so.
I, I, I mean, it's the city's desire not to, not to remove anyone
Right.
that's operating legally, e- illegally, what, what, what have you. It's to bring them into compliance, have the zoning appropriate, and, um, this light industrial use was recommended specifically by the A, area-wide plan. And so, it's, uh, it's, should be Holbrook's, uh, arts district, really.
But for now, we've gotta start somewhere, 'cause like, you've mentioned, you know, like you see here, there was no permitted principal uses before, so anybody even looking at that area may not wanna try to jump through the hoops to try to do the conditional use permit, so at least this gets us started. Again, if we find that things pop up, there are conditional uses, there are, um, zoning, um, um, applications that they could request for different, um, what's the word I'm looking for?
Very, very, very good, very good point, uh, Mayor. Um, just because an area is zoned a specific way, and it, and it has, um, has recommendations or, or, or zoning ordinances, if somebody wanted to bring in a business, they could always apply for a variance. A variance gets a public hearing, they, they notify the residents from three hundred feet from the selected location, the public gets an input, and then the Planning and Zoning, uh, Commission would, would have that hearing, and we would make a recommendation. You know, if it's a unanimous, uh, unanimous decision that says, yeah, this would be a great thing, then it would probably get passed. If there was a, if there, if it wasn't, um, it wasn't recommended, tho- that business would have the opportunity to approach council separately to petition to have that business, uh, placed in that, in that zoning that it's not zoned for. So, it's really, it's really not about, um, restricting development or restricting businesses, it's about having some standards. You know, these are, these are principal uses, you can, you can do these things in this neighborhood based upon the area-wide plan study that we put together, and that StanTech put together, and we reviewed, and we said, yes, they're recommending this, this is what we wanna do. If somebody wanted to come in with some thing that's not on the list, they have the opportunity, uh, either to go with a conditional use that's outlined in the conditional use format, or apply for a variance.
Right, so thank you, Mr. Collins, we appreciate that. So, does anybody, so like I said, this will be a first reading again, so I'm gonna go ahead and read, read it by heading, unless anybody's requesting the full ordinance. All right. Ordinance number twenty-five dash zero nine, in ordinance of the Council of the City of Holbrook, Arizona, amending the Code of Holbrook, Arizona, Chapter Six, Planning and Zoning, Article Six dash one, zoning ordinance. Declaring the City of Holbrook City Code amendments to Chapter Six, Planning and Zoning, Article Six dash one, zoning ordinance, December tenth, twenty twenty-five, a public record. Adopting the City of Holbrook City Code amendments to the Chapter Six, Planning and Zoning, Article Six dash one, zoning ordinance, December tenth, twenty twenty-five, by reference, providing for severability, providing for penalties, and establishing an effective date. Is there comments from the deists, the council?
Uh, I think it'd be great revitalizing that area, it ties into trails. Not that part. Just try to get some, all the transfer stations and
We're gonna get those trails one of these days.
We are gonna get these trails, so. All right, any other comments, questions, concerns, that administration can be aware of to address at the next reading of it? In the meantime, if you do think of something, um, please go see Mr. Sullivan. It's not appropriate for us to go to the P and Z Commission, so we need to go through, uh, Mr. Sullivan, if you do have any questions or concerns, that he can find out. All right. Hearing no other questions or concerns, uh, we'll move on, thank you, Mr. Collins.
You're welcome.
All right, speaking of Planning and Zoning Commission, we would like to address the vacant Planning and Zoning Commission position. Says a vacancy in the Planning and Zoning Commission created by the passing of Buddy DuPay. A notice was posted on October sixteenth, twenty twenty-five, that the city is accepting letters of interest for the vacant position on the Planning and Zoning Commission. The deadline for the submission of letters of interest was set for noon on November fifth, twenty twenty-five. A Planning and Zoning Commission position needs to be appointed by the mayor, and a consent from the council is needed. Uh, so we did have, um, one letter of interest from Mr. Merrill Young, who's here with us tonight, thank you for being here. And as you can see, there's a lot of work that's being going on, and the planning is, they're doing, they're really active, and I'm very excited about a lot of the work that they are doing, so. So, we just had a list of the qualifications, um, so, as a mayor appoints, uh, a member with the consent of the council, so, I would like to appoint Merrill Young to be on the Planning and Zoning Commission to fill the vacancy that Buddy DuPay left. He would fill the term until, I believe it was, um, twenty, October fifteenth, twenty twenty-seven. So, uh, with that, I'd like to, oh, so we don't take a motion, it's just a consent, so it was just like a, aye or nay vote, a consent.
Yeah, just if, if the council consents.
So, will the council consent to Merrill Young being on the Planning and Zoning Commission, in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any close? Motion, consent passes, Merrill, thank you, they meet every second Thursday, I believe it is, at five fifteen? No, third, third, sorry, it's the third Thursday. All right, we appreciate you being on the
And I was also contacted by Mike Sample, who's, um, the Planning and Zoning Commission. He was unable to attend today's meeting due to prior obligations, but he did contact me, and on behalf of Mike Sample, congratulations, and Vakma Bor, he looks forward to your participation in all the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Yeah, great, so, all right, thank you.
Congratulations.
Yes, thank you.
Or condolences.
So, we'll need to get you that area-wide plan as well, so they've, they've been working a lot off of that, so.
I'm quite familiar with it, I own a lot of property down there, we, I was at that meeting with him, we discussed the zoning and talked there.
That's fantastic, so, there was a lot of work done on that plan, and so we're gonna
Merrill's gonna be a great fit for the commission.
We're excited, yes, thank you. All right, moving on to item D, increased fees for construction water, discussion only, uh, tab six, while I read the background. Said fees on bulk water have recently increased from two dollars and eighty-five cents per unit to twenty-two dollars per unit. Bulk water includes potable Bulk water includes potable water and construction water. Discussion is request on increasing the construction water fee, but leaving the potable water fee at twenty-two dollars per unit. Uh, this was brought to us by Councilmember DePoya. So we'll turn the time over to you.
The reason I brought this up is I've had a lot of, um, calls and things from community members noticing how many trucks go and fill up every single day. I mean, constantly, all day, like seven.
Three and four days?
Yeah. It's just constant, constant. And I just feel we could be making more money from construction water. As, because of so much water that they are actually getting, daily. I mean, I don't, I'm, I don't know a higher fee. I'm, I'm not saying that we charge them so, so much more. But I think that we could be getting some extra money from them, from how much water that they are actually using compared to, um, the other people.
Potable.
So.
Potable water.
Oh, sorry. I'm.
It's okay. Go ahead.
No, no, no. You finish whatever you want.
That was it. I just.
Okay, sorry.
I was just leaving today, coming back from our warehouse in Romero, and there were two full, like the full-size semis filling in line to fill up with that water right there.
And.
It's pretty much constant all day.
So as a reminder, this is, um, different water. That's different than our drinking water. So this is a different one.
No, it's good. It's good water.
It's good construction water, but it's still.
But it's not chlorinated. So it's non-potable.
Yeah. So, um, Mr. Sullivan did email the council, uh, a few days back with an example of one of the commercial accounts. Hopefully you guys had a, saw a copy of that. Uh, we won't say names for, it's not appropriate for us to name off businesses' names and things like that. Um, but they were showing us kind of the, cause I know a lot of people are concerned that, hey, how do we know that they're, we're paying and things like that? Can you remind us of how much, like that one particular, and that's just one example?
So the, the one, there, there's two main companies out there. One company is hauling water for the, uh, Sun Valley project. I think it's called Snowflake Solar in Sun Valley, but it's mainly for that. And then we also had, uh, a company haul water for the road construction. We did send out a bill for the road construction. That's the bill I sent you guys out, showing the difference of how much we're bringing in. So when we did raise the rates, our last bill was a hundred and forty-one dollars. And then this last bill that, or before we raised the rates, and then our, our last bill that we sent out, um, with the new rates was over ten thousand dollars. So we are, that was drastically, uh.
Forty-one to ten thousand?
Yeah, a hundred and forty-one dollars to ten thousand dollars. So it is a drastic increase already. Um, as far as I know, the other customers that do water services, so if we are backed up at our well, they have been going to other, um, property owners that have other wells. And when they found out our rate moved to twenty-two, they increased their rate to twenty-two as well. So, uh, we're not competing with each other. We're all, um, at the same rate right now.
Is it, is the other water machine hooked up out there now where they're paying on that machine that we got?
That, that one is, is plumbed in. We are working on the technical side, on the backside to where they can, uh, new customers can log in and, uh, put money on the thing. But we're making sure our systems, uh, talk to each other.
So right now, they're not paying that way?
Right now, they're still paying the twenty-two dollars per thousand, but they're paying for it out here.
Right here.
Until we get it done.
Okay. And so are we going to get another machine for this construction water?
That's the one that we brought to, when I was on vacation, Misty brought it to the council and it passed. So that one is ordered. It should be here sometime in January. And we'll, we'll be able to do the, they'll be able to talk and do, it'll be the same exact system. Talk to each other and then we won't have to do the billing. They'll, they'll automatically do the billing for us.
So how are they doing out there now? Like what's keeping track of how much water they're?
So what they do is they come in, they open an account with us. Um, we require a deposit. This is a little bit different because most construction companies will come in and they're just, uh, uh, you know, two or three week project. They'll fill out a log of how much water they're using. And then when they come in and close their account, we'll either refund their money or bill them their final bill right there. This one's different because it's, it's been several months long. We've never ran in, into a situation like this. So we've been in, in contact with the owners on that. And they're keeping track of their logs daily. So, um, we will get their logs and we'll create their bill.
And, and so it's, it's the honor system.
It is a honor system, but they are also tracking it out there too, once it's delivered. So, because, um, the water haulers is actually a subcontractor to the contractor to the building. So they're tracking both sides to verify the amount of gallons hauled.
So what about the, is it an algae place that's at Adamana or something that's been coming in and get water?
Algae, algae right now, they get the water, the.
Back here.
They get the water back here or out, out there once we get that machine running. And I, I sent you guys a, I sent you guys a, a copy of that bill as well.
Wow, that's amazing.
I just know we have a lot of water going out. We have a lot of questions from community members.
Well, you can tell them it was a hundred percent.
Almost increase.
That's a huge increase.
About two eighty-five.
And I do hear a lot of, a lot of, um, public comments saying that it's our water table, water going out. It's not on our water system. That, that is a, a well dedicated just for that construction. So it is too close to the impression of the, of the river to have that good water. And that's why it's really not affecting our water table at, at all.
Different aquifer. Saltier.
Saltier, different aquifer. But it's not affecting our town water.
Drink in Joseph City, it's the same taste.
Okay. All right. Any further discussion or current follow-up?
I wish we could vote on this.
This was a discussion only discussion.
Oh, okay.
It, it, so, so the process, i- if this does, if one of you guys do want to, um, think about it and maybe increase that, I would suggest no, because it's easier for us to charge the same rate out there, but we'd be able to work it out. But bottom line is if that is the desire of the council, we'll need to bring that to you guys the next meeting in December and post a notice of intent. And then we'll start that process over again.
Cause it'll take, what, ninety days?
It'll take, yeah, ninety days.
So the construction water is not the same as the potable water?
It's its own separate well.
But it is clean enough to drink.
Yeah, yeah, it is.
And I don't think it's.
We just don't chlorinate it and test it.
Right.
I mean, you pay higher utilities if you're a business in general, like electric, gas. So why not? But I think that that's a, a concern I've been hearing is why are they being charged the same amount of money as a person that's just living here? So I don't know. I think it's a good discussion to have, something we need to think over because they do have that, that money to spend there for the corporation.
And from my side, it's not chlorinated. So we're not managing it. Uh, we're not testing it. We're not doing lab work. You know, it's, it is what it is. So that's savings that the city's not dealing with. Power's power. That's just my point of view, but I.
I am thankful for the increase of.
I, I'm willing to go.
And if that pump, how much is that pump to, if it needs to be replaced? How, where is the?
We just replaced it this last summer. It was twenty thousand.
And how often are you replacing that pump?
We hadn't replaced it in.
Twenty years?
Yeah, twenty years, over twenty years, so.
But I mean, it's had a lot more activity in the last couple of years as well.
But we made that up with one bill.
With one bill.
In one month, one bill.
They're better now than they were twenty years ago.
Yeah. More efficient. Pumps now are way more efficient. And we'll be able to ke- keep track of it way better once we get that machine going too. So again, that machine cost us twenty thousand. Um, one bill in one month is going to pay for that, that machine out there.
So that machine comes, they have to do something to.
They'll have to log in and prepay. And then they won't have to come into us. We won't generate the bill. They'll have to log into the system, prepay for it, and then plunk in a code to get the, in order for the water to turn on.
All right. Are you, so, like you said, you can always address it again. All right. Thank you. All right. Item number E, canvass of election. On November fourth, twenty twenty-five, a mail-in ballot election was held. The election included ten propositions regarding amendments to the Holbrook City Charter. ARS sixteen dash six four two, section three states the following, the governing body of a city, town or special district shall meet and canvass the election not less than six days and not more than twenty days following the election. With that, we'd like to turn the time over to our city clerk.
So there are a total of two thousand four hundred and thirty-seven registered voters in our city. There were four hundred and seventy-two, um, ballots cast. Um, so that was nineteen point thirty-seven percent. For proposition four thirty-eight, there were two hundred and ninety-five yes votes and one hundred and seventy no votes. Um, so the, the yes votes won. For proposition four hundred and thirty-nine, uh, two hundred and sixty-five yes votes and two hundred and three no votes. So the yes votes did win on proposition four thirty-nine. Proposition four forty, there were two hundred and ninety yes votes, one seventy-seven no votes. But so the yes votes did win for proposition four forty. For proposition four forty-one, there were two hundred and one yes votes and two hundred and sixty-four no votes. So the no votes won on that one for proposition four forty-one. For proposition four forty-two, there were a hundred and eighty-seven yes votes, two hundred and seventy-eight no votes. So the no votes won for proposition four forty-two. For proposition four forty-three, there were three hundred and forty-two yes votes, one hundred and twenty-nine yo- no votes. So the yes votes won for proposition four forty-three. For proposition four forty-four, there were two hundred and forty-one yes votes and two hundred and twenty-four no votes. So the yes votes won for proposition four forty-four. For proposition four forty-five, there were three hundred and eight yes votes, one hundred and fifty-nine no votes. But it, so the yes votes won for proposition four forty-five. For proposition four forty-six, there were three hundred and fifteen yes votes, one hundred and fifty-two no votes. So the yes votes were won for proposition four forty-six. And for proposition four forty-seven, there were a hundred and seventy yes votes and two hundred and ninety-seven no votes. So the no votes won for proposition four forty-seven.
Lisa, could you remind us of four forty-seven?
What the proposition's.
Forty-two and forty-one.
I have a right here if you don't, do you have them?
I have a right here. So proposition four forty-one, um.
City treasurer.
Was the charter amended to increase, the charter amendment increases from five hundred thousand to one million dollars the amount. The city may expand in the form of direct expenditures, tax concessions, or debt without voter approval. And the value of the city-owned land, the city may grant or exchange to construct or aid in the construction of certain facilities. And then it was four forty-two? Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Four forty-two is the charter amendment requires each ordinance. I skipped, I got the wrong one, sorry. Um, the charter amendment, oh, that's the one.
I think four forty-two is the five hundred thousand to a million.
That's the one I just read.
Yeah, the other one I think was treasurer, right?
Four forty-one.
Four forty-one, okay. So four forty-one is the charter amendment repeals the office of tr- the treasurer, city treasurer, the company appointment process and the duties of the position. And then four forty-seven, um, is the charter amendment refills a provision that dictates how the use of gender is applied throughout the Holbrook City Charter, which specifies that words used, used in the masculine gender include the feminine and neuter.
I think if people understood what they, because people were calling my dad like, what is this? But like, and then the treasurer thing, people didn't understand it because that hasn't been filled for several years.
I don't know if we've ever had a same treasurer.
We've ever had.
I think we just didn't get the word out. Yeah. Exactly. So, so, uh, Lisa, we don't need a voter consent. We just have to read it. All right. Thank you for that.
Thank you for the clarification.
All right. With that, um, we'll move on to item number ten, summary of current events. I made some notes and I didn't, came up to, um, first off, I want to thank, um, Dr. Coral Evans with Senator Kelly's office and also Senator Kelly, him and his staff, they reached out to us a week ago. They had seen a post on Facebook saying, hey, that the food bank had run out of food. And so Dr. Coral Evans saw that post. She reached out to myself here, which got to Vice Mayor Nelson, who oversees that. Anyways, they were able to, were you gonna talk about that on yours?
I was.
Okay. Then I will stop right there. Just a thank you to them and he can explain to you what they did for, so. I know it sounds crazy, but Christmas, we're gonna talk about Christmas for a minute because our Christmas tree lighting is in three weeks. Isn't that crazy? So our Christmas, the City of Holbrook Annual Christmas Tree Lighting will be December fifth at six P M. There at Felicity Park. There's also a toy drive going on at the same time. So if you want to bring a toy, bring that too. Um, the Festival of Tree and Parade of Light registrations are being accepted now. And there are some flyers and registration forms here at City Hall. Um, we'd love to have you register for both the Festival of Trees and the parade. I do want to thank the citizens, um, for coming out to, for the votes for the charter. We'll now be, uh, so we're excited to get that done. It's been a long time coming. And like I said before, we want to thank the committee for all their hard work to get us to that point with that charter review and those, uh, recommendations for the propositions. Next, we'll be putting together an independent advisory board to go over the code of conduct as well. But we'll have more information to follow on that. And with that, I just wanted to talk about Thanksgiving since we will not have a November meeting because it'll be the night before Thanksgiving. And I'm assuming some of you guys will be starting to smoke your turkeys the night before. So just let me know what time dinner is.
I'm glad it's turkeys we're smoking.
It does, yeah. So, with that, we'll turn the time over to Vice Mayor Nelson.
So I wanted to talk about the food crisis that we had. So when the government shut down, the food bank, the Holbrook Emergency Food Bank was like doubled. For example, the day we usually have eighteen to twenty people, we had thirty people in the first fifty minutes that we were open. We had thirty-five altogether. So we were just hammered. We actually ran out of food, which was the first time that's happened in forever. We had to close down. And so the first thing that happened was Freddie Brown, she posted on Facebook, we're out of food, we're closing for these days. Two people responded right away. One was Veronica James and the other was, uh, Coral Evans, who used to be the mayor of Flagstaff. Coral Evans works for Senator Kelly and she got things rolling. So the first thing that, that happened was that Veronica James got together a coalition of people that were therapists and they got us seven hundred dollars overnight. And they spent that money at the Walmart in Winslow. And we stocked. And so we were just down one day. We were, we were open the next day. Coral Evans got Senator Kelly to get the union of the Safeway workers to donate five thousand dollars. And they drove up from Phoenix to do that. Well, the management of Safeway was not going to be outdone. So they matched that five thousand dollars. And so also a united way, um, what's her name?
Liz Archuleta.
Liz Archuleta. Thank you. So Liz Archuleta found out and from Coral Evans, and they made a donation. So all of a sudden, we went from, and, and then that wasn't all. And so Saint Mary's Food Bank sent us an emergency shipment. And so we went from being not in really good shape to doing really well. But we have doubled. We have doubled the amount of people. So many people were working for the, uh, Petrified Forest and other government agencies. And all of a sudden, people we'd never seen before had come. And, uh, there was somebody who's came today that her wig was cut off. She has a, uh, a, a little boy that's about eighteen months old that has some severe needs. And so she can't work full-time because she's taking care of this little boy. But we, the Holbrook Emergency Food Bank was there. And then we had our annual buncle party. I say that because Terry should have won. She would have won had she come. And.
I was out of town or otherwise I'd have been there.
And the, and the, the town came out famously. We uh, we filled eleven tables, uh we made twenty-three hundred dollars after expenses. And so we're, we were, we were assuming that we were gonna have to make up a hundred and thirty Christmas boxes at a hundred and five dollars a box. What used to cost us eighty dollars is now a hundred and five dollars. And, but we think that's probably not gonna be enough Christmas boxes, because it's not even December yet and we filled out a hundred and five out of a hundred and thirty applications. So because of these extra funds, we're gonna increase that and give a Christmas box to every applicant. Anyway, I just wanted to thank those people, I hope I didn't forget anybody. Oh, and then also our Christmas boxes. If you uh, if you're interested in helping us, we're at the senior center and we have assembly line at seven A M until nine A M.
What date?
On the twentieth of December, which is the Saturday before Christmas. And then we distribute the boxes from nine until noon. So we'd love to have you. If you can take a few boxes in the back of your pickup or if you can help us. So we start and first the ham goes in and then a couple cans of green beans, it just goes down. And there's like forty items that go into this box. And we would love to have you. And then also um uh Vicki was chosen to be in the giving box in Snowflake and so was the Holbrook Emergency Food Bank. And we're giving away um some of the cards you can buy for us are like a, like a forty thing of water. And that's for our people in Sun Valley and people in Adamana that can't drink their water. They come to the food bank for water. And that's um, and then we're giving away citrus. We're also giving away a dinner for two, we serve a dinner every Thursday at twenty eleven and one. And we're, we're also giving away a pound of ground beef, cause they wanted something for five dollars. Now, at the time we s- signed up for it, ground beef was like four thirty-nine. Now it's like five ninety-nine, but still that's one, one of the things. So we would love if you could come out. The grand opening of the, of the giving box in Snowflake is at the end of the I, the old I G A.
The oldest store home.
That old, oldest store home, it's just a big machine. So my, my grandkids love to go. There's hot chocolate, there's cookies, there's donuts, there's carolers, there's coffee. You go and get a treat and then your kids look. And like my grandkids wanted to send goats to somebody in Africa and chickens to somebody in South America. And so there's local and international charities. We were really honored to be the local charity, we were the first charity selected in Holbrook.
And a hundred percent of your donation goes to that charity?
Yeah, a hundred percent. The Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints picks up all of the expenses. And s- and, and in fact, th- they make sure that we, we spend that money exactly like, like they say. I think that's all I had.
Make sure that's it? Just kidding, that was great. No, we appreciate you, we really do, good news. Councilwoman Purvison?
Um so I would just like to give a big thank you to some community members, Tammy Gray, Robin Gonzalez. That we had a bunch of ladies had gotten together and wanted to help people who didn't have food as well over this last weekend and put together food boxes and did their own little food drive. And it was actually really successful. They hadn't, and, and everybody, they got rid of every single box that they had. There was a lot of people that were needing food and it's just really moving to see how communities come together in times of crises. I think it's what makes Holbrook exceptional is our strength of, and our sense of community. And so I just wanted to, to give them a shout out for putting in that effort and time to do that for people who are in need.
That's great, thank you. Councilwoman DePoya?
Um I just wanna say thank you again to the Men's Association for all the work they're doing out at the golf course and especially for the delicious dinner that they invited us to and served us. It was, it was very good and we do appreciate all that they're doing. Um congratulations to the scarecrow winners and hopefully next year we'll have a lot more scarecrows out there. The veterans thing at the courthouse was very nice, I don't know how many of you attended, but it was very nice. And it, it was well attended this year and I think one reason why is because they invited the Hewlett Harmonizers to sing. Kids singing, you get parents coming, so, but it was really nice and, and they did a really, really good job. And um that's it, except I'd like to wish everyone a blessed Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Councilwoman Pat?
I think everything's been said, it was nice going out there and Randy showing us every, the new pump that's gonna be put in and just how the golf course is set up and how it's coming along. And its potential. And let's see here, and the vets, the vet posters, I noticed those, I noticed that they weren't seniors. I was like, hey, wait a minute. But yeah, it's great that we can honor them that way, so. And yeah, that's it.
Same, I've just heard a lot of people come in and mention about how nice the banners looked.
And I know there's some people that weren't able to get, they didn't have the information and so um Walker, our social media guy said, hey, if we get him still at least a picture, he'll put him on Facebook for now and then hopefully next year we'll get a banner of them. So feel free to still send them in to the city and we'll at least try to get them at least on social media, so. With that, we'd like to turn the time over to Manager Sullivan.
Thank you, um we, we didn't know how the banners were gonna turn out, it being our first year. We were expecting around thirty to forty and we had over ninety, so. Just wanna say thank you to our veterans, we really do appreciate, City of Holbrook does appreciate them, so. We do hope to continue to do this every year. We received a grant this year, mentioned in Christmas, from APS to help us pr- purchase a tree, so we don't have to cut a tree. It's gonna be a pre-lit uh tree, so hopefully it looks nice. And, and consistent, so we appreciate APS to help us out with that. I, uh, hot topic that we've been discussing are MOUs. I did send those MOUs out um two weeks ago, kind of late on a Thursday. All of those organizations haven't been able to get to the boards yet. So hopefully by next December, or the first meeting in December, I'll have those MOUs on the council. And uh the plan will be, because we haven't had MOUs since twenty eighteen, I think was the last year I found some, some are, were back to twenty fifteen, so. Doing this all over again, we, we wanna have as much input with those organizations as we can. We're not trying to put them out, we just wanna have that memorandum standing between us and those organizations, so. Um if I get those back in time, plan on do, having that at the beginning of uh December. And um it'll be just to continue through June. And then June, I'll plan on putting those MOUs back on there, once we discuss budget talks and those kinda things. And then we'll do an, another agreement come July one or something like that, is the plan. Tumbleweed drop is scheduled, so we'll be getting, putting that on our website. Participants that wanna bring in their, their tumbleweed, um they are welcome to do so on December twenty-seventh from twelve to one at Gillespie Park. And then they will have a, the winner of that tumbleweed w- will have the drop on December thirty-first at the historic courthouse, so. We did this event last year, uh we're, some of those events that are, are they're kind of o- out there, but still people like them, so we're gonna keep on doing them, so. Look forward to that. Uh we have been finishing up our audit, so um they, I do have the draft financial statements, but I am working on the capital assets listing and in some minor details to make sure um our audit numbers balance before we can present that to you. That new pump at the, the the golf course was fin- installed and finished today. So they, they started it Monday, crane came in Monday, pulled it all out Tuesday, uh yesterday. Or they worked it during the holidays, so they installed it. Um the crane lowered those new pumps in yesterday and they got it up and pressure tested today, so we're up and running. Um we did shut the pumps down for the winter. And before we fire them back up for the spring, we're um looking at getting a diver to go in there and try to clean out any sediment or uh give us any idea of any other potential problems before we do fire those pumps up completely, so. Uh we will be looking forward to that during the winter. East Delaware Street Department, since we put the chip cell on hold, uh we started uh doing more concrete work. So East Delaware is complete, um that road will stay closed for the weekend, so we can let that concrete cure. And then it should be uh open, running next Monday. And we did a complete curb sidewalk and the street repair on that. Street Department will start dressing up all, all these other streets, uh main streets for the holidays. Cause the parade's only a couple of weeks away now too, so. And then another shout out to Barbara with uh C W G, we got special funding uh to work on the Holbrook Senior Center. That was a eight hundred, or two hundred and eighty thousand dollar grant. Of which we'll be able to use fifty thousand of it. It's a little above those numbers, but little over fifty thousand dollars we'll be able to use for admin.
All right, thank you very much. All right, item eleven, submission of petition for items not on the agenda?
There are none.
And adjournment, do we have a motion?
I make a motion to adjourn. Who seconded it?
Uh Karina did.
Okay.